Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Board of Commissioners. The League is proud to support voter education and to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. Wake County is governed by a seven-member Board of Commissioners. The Board enacts policies such as the establishment of the property tax, tax rate, regulation of land use and zoning outside municipal jurisdictions, and the adoption of an annual budget. Each Commissioner files to run for election within the district where they live. But Commissioners are elected countywide and represent and serve all county residents. This means that every voter votes for candidates in all seven districts. The current fiscal year 2021 budget for Wake County is $1.47 billion. It covers the Wake County Public Schools, Wake Tech Community College, libraries, Health and Human Services, the county contribution to food and nutrition programs, law enforcement, parks, EMS services, elections, and many more programs we see every day. Today, we welcome candidates for District Three, Democrat Maria Trevanya and Republican Steve Hale. District Three is in the northern part of Wake County and includes parts of Raleigh. Both candidates live in District Three. Welcome, Maria and Steve. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Board of Commissioners the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the Board. I'd like to verify with you that neither of you have received these questions in advance.
I had not.
Okay. All right, you may now have two minutes for an introductory statement, and Maria, you may go first.
Thank you very much, League of Women Voters, for having us speak this afternoon. It's been an extremely difficult five months, so I'm hoping you and your loved ones have been well and healthy through these times and continue to be during the times to come. Again, my name is Maria Trevanya, and I'm running for Wake County Commissioner in District Three. During the primaries, many of you had learned about me, particularly my undergraduate work in biology and physical education and some of my professional experience in public health. But many do not know that I did my graduate work actually in epidemiology and active in the public health for over 20 years. And pertinent to these times, I've worked in planning and crisis management during their early HIV/AIDS epidemic and the H1N1 influenza and avian flu pandemic. And also during my professional career, I served as a technical consultant to state, county, and local governments during the economic downturns of the early 2001s and great recession of 2007 and through 2009. Specifically, I led government projects to identify operational redundancies, created efficiencies and advice in creating cost-effective budgets that saved millions of taxpayer dollars while saving jobs and enhancing quality of service. We are in unprecedented times, and our county will face many of these same issues, if not more dramatic, challenges. So before I filed to run for this position, it was thought that my experience would enhance the Board of Commissioners. Now, it is this specific experience we need to help our residents stay healthy, maintain high levels of service, and commit to a fiscally sound budget and budgets to weather the next few years. So I hope you and the voters of Wake County will consider me for your next Wake County Commissioner in District Three.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you so much, Marion and Maria, for participating in this. Maria and I met after her primary, and I found her to be charming. We enjoyed our conversations. I thought the coffee would last about five or 10 minutes, and we talked for two hours. So thank you, Maria, for that time. Again, my name is Steve Hale, candidate for Wake County Commissioner, District Three, which is actually western Wake County. It's not northern Wake County. It's western Wake County, so that's Cary, Morrisville, and Apex. So I've been a lifelong resident of Wake County, attended all Wake County Public Schools, including Wake Tech and NC State, former U.S. Army, served in counterintelligence services in Europe during the Cold War, prior to the fall of the Berlin Wall. Twenty-six years with the Wake County Sheriff's Office, retired as a detective lieutenant in homicide unit. Since my separation from the Sheriff's Office, I've worked as a criminal defense investigator in capital cases. Those are court-appointed cases where the state is seeking the death penalty. So to do that work, I'm licensed by the Department of Justice as a private investigator. The issues that are facing Wake County are similar to what's being faced all over the country, all over the world. Our declining revenue and increasing needs are going to be keys to how Wake County comes out on the other side of this crises. We've been... Current panel of commissioners has raised taxes for the last five years. They borrowed $2.5 billion. The payments on that are $300 million, $298 million, $295 million, $100 million of that in interest alone. So the past spending habits of the current panel of commissioners have put us in a bad way as to dealing with the COVID crisis. The decline in sales tax revenue is projected to be just under $50 million. So we have some fiscal issues that are facing this county that are going to have to be dealt with. The county manager proposed a number of cuts to different divisions within the county to meet the decline in revenue. Public safety is one that escaped without a lot of damage to their budget, but still, public safety is the first responsibility of government. They did eliminate some positions, vacant positions in the Sheriff's Office. They eliminated some potentially training opportunities for EMTs to be promoted to paramedics to meet the budget shortfall. So those issues have to be resolved soon.
All right. Thank you very much, Steve. Now, we're going to move on to the question part of the forum, and you will have two minutes to answer each question. "We are all living under new pressures and trying to adjust to a new normal. Existing inequalities are more apparent than ever. The public school system recognizes this disparity and has provided students with laptops and hotspots. What strategies are you prepared to offer to help low-income families with children as they navigate and adjust to the pandemic environment?" Steve, you may go first.
Thank you for that. Well, certainly, the priority for that falls on the Wake County Public School System Board, and I'd certainly support them in their endeavors. And I intend to stay in my lane when it comes to school issues. But there is clearly a disparity between the haves and the have-nots. The COVID has been cruel to the have-nots. I'm aware of the lack of broadband in some rural areas, lack of broadband in some low-income areas, and that's got to be resolved. These kids have got to get access to their teachers. These kids have got to get access to the resources that they need to learn and to grow and develop. I'm afraid that this COVID crisis is going to affect that generation for years to come, and we've got to do all that we can to ensure that we level the field when it comes to educational opportunities. And providing broadband to those that lack that service is key.
All right. Thank you. Maria?
Yes, so I actually have been working with addressing this crisis already. I've been working with Health and Human Services of Wake County and also the Wake County Public School System in providing laptops and hotspots to our more communities in need. But it goes beyond that, too. Like, this pandemic actually magnified the disparities and inequities that are happening in Wake County. And, you know, we've been providing food every day in conjunction with the county school system, because if a child is not nourished and they're under in terms of health, and they're not going to be able to concentrate and really be able to learn. So that's fundamental. Food, shelter, and clothing, and food being one of the key things to energize and nourish a child to be able to accept and thrive in an educational environment. But going back to your question, you know, in this pandemic time, safety of our children is not bringing them back to school. And virtual has been the way to ensure that they are, they stay and remain safe, not only for them, but their family, and also multigenerational in their family. So we need to really go back to the community and ask them and identify the hotspots, or the heat spots when it comes to need, and take this opportunity that has been magnified to address them in these times to come and when, in fact, we are elected into office. This is the baseline that we need to work with, and it needed to be revealed to be able to find solutions.
Thank you very much. Okay, then our next question is, "We expect many people to face a housing crisis in the next few months due to evictions or foreclosures resulting from high unemployment and the economic crisis we face here in Wake County. How do you propose to address what will become the dire need for emergency and longer-term affordable housing in our community?" Maria, you may go first.
So fortunately, there's been a commitment in our county, in our county government, to address this need. And again, like I say, that this pandemic has magnified what the realities have been, especially its impact on people of color. During the primary, I had said the best way... So in our current system, Wake County Government has created a division of housing affordability and homelessness. And they've done excellent work with the lead of Director Lorena McDowell to see where our needs are. But we need to act upon that plan. And I've also said, that plan is really addressed by a Wake County perspective. And all of our municipalities are trying to address affordable housing and homelessness in separate, not silos, but separate efforts. We need to all come together as a county and municipal leadership to make a comprehensive Wake County housing plan, because we're not going to be able to address the need to, before pandemic, 5,000 doors, when every year we're only creating 500. In terms of addressing this problem, currently, right now, Raleigh's going to have a bond, and Apex is going to have a bond. But we need to know how we can all address this to make a better, comprehensive way to find solutions. Yes, and I think we're on a good start with that, but we need to do more and make that commitment towards a variety of housing stocks, because all our municipalities have a variety of ways to be able to input and provide to that solution.
Thank you very much. Steve, you may go ahead.
Thank you. This is a tragic problem in Wake County, one of the most prosperous counties, or not the most prosperous counties in the state. It is always going to be a struggle. When you look at the increases in rents, particularly in downtown Raleigh, it's just, I can't imagine being a young family, starting out, and trying to find a place to live in Wake County. Our schoolteachers, our firemen, our entry-level workers that want to start a family are trying to find a place they can afford. With the rate of tax increases and the rate of the debt that has to be serviced makes that all the more difficult. We're going to have to partner with private entities. The government is not going to be able to solve this problem on its own. We can't. We don't have the financial resources. We don't own the land. We're going to have to partner with developers, with people that own plots of lands that maybe want to participate in a land bank. There's a number of initiatives that have been explored and something of an experiment to try to determine how we can provide homes, affordable homes, for those that want to live and work in Wake County. Wake County has an initiative that they've been working on as part of their goals, objectives, and initiatives. They are on track with that. They've identified some areas that they want to target for increasing affordable housing, like along transient lines. Some of those areas would maybe people could live in what we call affordable housing and forego private transportation and use public transit. So we're looking at areas like that that would be conducive to partner with private entities to provide affordable housing along those transit lines that have already been identified.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the next question. "Recent events have highlighted community pressures on the resources devoted to public safety and law enforcement. This can show up in how the criminal justice system operates, how law enforcement officers operate in public schools, and in other interactions in our community. Do you feel that improvements need to be made or that funding needs to be reevaluated?" Steve, you may go first.
Yes, I do think that funding needs to be evaluated. It needs to be increased. We need to provide some mental health training for these police officers to learn how to deal with people in crisis. That is the major problem with the relationship between the community and law enforcement, in my view. Being in law enforcement or criminal justice for almost 40 years, the call that's most prominent for service to law enforcement is mental health crisis. If someone can't cope with their problems and they're creating a disturbance in their community, it's 911 that gets called. It's not Wake County Mental Health. It's not Alliance Mental Health. It is law enforcement. And that when a police officer gets to a crime scene that involves someone that's in a mental health crisis, they are not equipped. They're not trained. None of us, and I went to the police academy 40 years ago, I had zero training in dealing with someone in crisis. What you're taught is situational awareness, how to protect yourself, how to protect the person that's in crises, and how to protect the people around them. Often, the simplest and quickest way to deal with someone that's in that type of crisis is to place them under arrest. If that individual demonstrates or perpetuates a minor crime in the presence of that police officer, then he can now arrest them and put them in the jail. That solves the problem for that moment, but it exacerbates the problem for that individual, because he's not going to get mental health service in the jail, and he's going to stay there. He doesn't have resources to bond himself out, and so he ends up being housed in the jail until his court date. And the judge sentences him to time served. If he'll plead guilty, and he's right back out of the street with the same problem. So we're going to have to fund additional public safety experts that are both mental health and in counseling and some of these people that leave the jail with still suffering from mental health or substance abuse. And that's just going to cost money.
All right. Thank you. Maria?
So when there's inequity in any part of our county, in our community, we all do not have equity. The time is now for Wake County to work with other municipalities and other entities and the community to eliminate race-based inequities. And the goal should be not closing the gap, but creating benchmarks to elevate all people in Wake County. And, you know, it's a systemic issue. You know, we're failing our communities of color and all our community. And that's a failure on Wake County and our government. We have an opportunity to address and change racial inequity, and this lies in the successes that are in public education, housing, employment, public health, and criminal justice. So it starts at schools. You know, we need to reimagine how we address, and it goes back to mental health, how we address acting out at schools. You know, many of our school districts have gone towards the increase in the school-to-prison pipeline. We need to address discipline in a different way. And it does go back to having more mental health professionals in schools, and that translates into our community. We need to reimagine our law enforcement and have more community involvement to make what we want to see law enforcement to become. I know we only have two minutes, but I've been stopped by law enforcement and been so scared and was threatened by the fact that I was going to be sent to an ICE detention center, because they didn't believe I was born in America. We can't have this pervasive culture. And I know I've worked in the municipalities in Wake County to quell that for our people of color and all people. So we have a commitment through barbershop talks and different community engagement events, and I'm hopeful in Wake County that we can not have the tragedies that are happening nationally happen here.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next question. "Wake County has invested a lot of time and money in improving our public transportation system. What do you think that system's going to look like in the next few years? How can we best benefit from the investment and capital improvements that have already been made?" Maria?
Yes. So to reach our desire to be a global leader and economically prepare Wake County for its future and get out of our economic situation that is impending, our ultimate goal should be to create a more integrated transportation system that is affordable to all non-drivers, is efficient for urban to suburban travel, and can be a stimulus and would be a stimulus for more efficient land use development. So my vision is actually to integrate light rail again. But if that is not possible, to try to find a reasonable and cost-effective integrated system. So specifically, I see that we need to lean towards the current demographic and economic trends. We're having an increase in senior population, urbanization, and an increased awareness of needing for improved health and economic, health and environmental concerns. We need to make sure that transportation stops are actually integrated to developments of multi-use neighborhoods who have residents who tend to not use as many cars and want alternative transportation. We need to work with businesses actually to incentivize flexible or staggered work stop-start times and create van pools and car pools and provide benefits for employees who use transportation. We need to integrate planning when it comes to road expansion and transit improvements, because road expansions induce more vehicle travel. And if we encourage more transit, this can eliminate some of the parking demand, pollution, and really chances of services provide a level of equity for non-drivers and people who live in the outskirts that need to travel for work and don't have personal transportation. Transit is the best way to develop equity when it comes to the people in our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very good. Steve?
Thanks, Marion. So right now, there's a half-cent sales tax goes towards light rail. Durham's experiment with light rail did not go well. The idea being that we would have a rail running from south of Garner, stopping in various stops, Raleigh, Cary, Morrisville, Apex, and ending up in Durham. But connecting to that is still the problem. So even if we was to open light rail in that route tomorrow, you would still have to get in your car and drive to one of those rail stations. I lived in Europe for a number of years. It's a lot more dense. It's a lot more compact. I could walk from my little village to the train stop there and get off in Paris and walk to a hotel. It's just a different geography than what we have here. The same in New York. If you've visited New York or Boston, any large cities, it's very dense, and it makes sense. I just don't see that working here. The bus systems that they're incorporating in, again, along the high-density routes and low-income routes, the people that want to work in downtown Raleigh but don't earn an income to live in one of those $2,000 a month, one-bedroom apartments. But light rail, I don't see that in our future. Our infrastructure is in decline. The COVID has hit the sales taxes that DOT collected on licensing and registrations and motor vehicle purchases. And so they have cut back on their funding, they being the department of transportation that builds our roads and builds our bridges. Wake County has no responsibility for that, but we do get to enjoy the fruits of their work. So I think that our public transportation is going to concentrate on electric buses, autonomous vehicles at some point. I hope we see the Jetsons' cars, and maybe Maria's grandchildren will get to enjoy that. But the light rail issue, as much as I would love to have it, as I say, traveling in Europe, traveling in the Northeast United States, it's a fabulous way to get around. But in rural Wake County, it's becoming more urban. But in rural Wake County, rural North Carolina, I just don't see that as an answer.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, our fifth and final question. "Wake County provides vital health services to the community as we see currently with the pandemic testing and tracing. Another example is a Wake County infant mortality work group, which reported this year on the very high death rate of African-American mothers and babies. How will you protect the budget devoted to such vital health services as you are forced to confront the financial pressures from decreased tax revenues? What programs and resources should the county commission direct to help vulnerable populations?" Steve, your?
The WIC program is absolutely paramount. We have to fund the least of us, those that can least defend and care for themselves, our children. So the women's infant and children's care has got to be funded fully. I'm an advocate for WICs. The single mothers, single parents of either gender have a huge responsibility that they have to deal with on their own. And programs that go specifically to the care for children. You know, we had a program at the Sheriff's Office that dealt with child fatalities, and you would think that that would be most often accidents in the home. But a lot of it is abuse. A lot of it is poor care. The death of children that we were investigating, we would investigate the death of anyone that didn't occur under the care of a physician, and it was heartbreaking to see the conditions that some of these children, infants aged, I'm talking about age one through five, the environment that they were living in. So it's not just a public safety issue, but Wake County Mental Health, Wake County Social Services, Human Services, all of us together have to work along one another to make sure that the least of us are cared for.
Thank you. Maria?
So as I said earlier in my introduction, I worked as an epidemiologist and a biostatistician. And many of my years, I worked five years, actually, in the Health Department in maternal and child health, and another five years in CPS. So I've worked directly in trying to address this problem in communities. So part of that time, I worked on the Pregnancy Risk Assessment Monitoring System, which is a CDC project that was based all over the United States. And that's an opportunity that we can work with our federal government and the CDC and the NIH to be able to integrate some of the solutions that they've seen over the course of several decades and also to get funding, a project of funding for that in terms of helping our community. I've also worked in WIC directly and Medicaid and being able to provide for our mothers who can't afford or in our situation that they need additional help when it comes to services and funding. Prenatal care is essential to make sure that we have a low infant mortality rate and have thriving kids or babies and children in their first few years. And so I would hope that that experience, working with our Health and Human Services Division at Wake County, we can really address the decline in terms of our status when it comes to healthy moms and babies. Unfortunately, the budget actually was cut for public health this past this past fiscal year. So along with pandemic and this major crisis, a major issue, we need to be committed to put more money into public health, or we won't get out of these disparities and, and health issues that are affecting our, our residents.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you candidates for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running and serving in elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy, and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful to have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve the important duties as member, members of the Wake County Board of Commissioners. You will have two minutes now to make closing statements. Maria, you may go ahead.
Sure. Thank you so much again for having us speak today and to get to know us a little better as candidates and as people. We've been talking about issues that are related to my professional career, but I wanted to add that as a balance, I've dedicated my life outside of my work as a community activist and advocate here all over the country and here particularly in Wake County and the municipalities located in Wake County. This was all driven to support people who don't have a voice, to get more engaged and bring forth positive change for them and their community. From advocating for affordable housing and public, speaking out for public transportation, fair elections, and environmental sustainability, to speaking out for the rights of people of color, women, and LGBTQIA+ and all the people in our community. My commitment to all of these and many other causes are life, lifelong and enduring. Wake County needs a representative who has a pragmatic and, and has practical experience that is needed in the environment that we're, we're facing right now. A person who's faced many of these issues that we're struggling with today. I have this experience and make this commitment to you if you elect me as your next Wake County Commissioner. So find out more details about me, be it my professional or civic engagement by going to my website, mariaforwake.com, or following updates and news about events and other issues on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and TikTok at Maria For Wake. And I respectfully ask for your vote. Vote by mail, early voting, or on Election Day in November. Again, for this opportunity to speak today, please stay safe and healthy.
Thank you very much. Steve?
I join Maria in taking the League of Women Voters and Marion for hosting this event. All the success I've had as an adult, I owe to Wake County. All the training and experience that has made me successful in business, I owe to Wake County. All of my work as an adult has been in public service. The work I've done as a private investigator, as a small business owner, post-law enforcement, has been to work with indigents that are accused of the most heinous crimes. These are poor people that can't defend themselves or don't have the resources to defend themselves. And I take great pride in that work. I owe Wake County, the Wake County Government, Wake County Public Schools, our university system, again, for the successes I've had in life. I would like for our viewers to consider voting for me as a candidate. The current Board of Commissioners are all Democrats. They're all philosophically aligned. There has been no diversity of opinion. There's been no diversity of philosophy or fiscal responsibility. And I, I think any group, any organization should not be all Republican or all Democrat. We need diversity in, in both gender, race, and political affiliations or political views. So for that alone, I think that I should be considered as a candidate. Again, I want to thank Maria for her time. As I said, she's charming. I enjoyed our coffee, and I'm sure we'll do that again soon. Thank you all.
Thank you. We close our forum now. Be sure to go to vote 411 to learn more about the candidates on your ballot. And to reinforce the contact information that Maria and Steve have, you can find it also on vote411.org. And you can also learn about the latest information on polling place hours and locations for voting. Thank you again for joining us.